Ready to do anything?
Yep.
Okay, let's say everybody on the rainy evening, we'll stay in the same place and get this thing started.
National Agent Caesar's alive of the United States of America and the Republic for the science. One nation, I'm not gonna invisible.
Thank you, James, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, any announcements? No. Uh, public comment? You have sign up chief invite? Hey, don't bear with me just a minute, I'm gonna, I got two, I wanna read in the public comment. I went spoke, uh, last week at the M R elementary school, the Thursday. About local politics with the election thing. Then, just to give you a brief background, I spoke for three or four minutes and told them, I said, hey, I hope y'all got some questions for me, because I really don't know what y'all know and don't know about politics. So I says, anybody got any questions? And they're like, one hundred and eighty of them. I bet you nine eighty-nine went. So I said, whoa, 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 let's start over here, we'll work ourselves by grammar, I'll get everybody, if it takes too much, I'll get everybody. So in saying that, when I got ready to leave, a couple of young gals and their teachers walked up to me with letters. So after I got in the truck and opened them up, I thought that something just need to read out. So this one is from Lily Ogles. She says, uh, dear, uh, Mayor Mills River, I wish for there to be a swimming pool in Mills River Park, because it would be nice to be able to relax in a nice summer day without getting dirty from the river. Sincerely, Lily. P S, let me know if you will or will not, and why or why you would. So I think it actually ran in. Sorry. This one is from Lydia State. And it says, dear mayor, can you add a pool so I can take it up? Since you had a pool to build her park, I think that would be because I think the children and maybe even the grownups might have more fun. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna respond back to them with a letter and tell them that it got read in the public comment. And we'll get that taken care of. Now, let's get on to some serious stuff here. Uh, I've got a public comment, Mike Cole, if you step up to the stand and give us your name and your address where you live, please.
Uh, Mike Cole. Um, live on, uh, Manhattan six thirty, East Chatsworth, New Jersey. And, uh, I'm an advocate for the planning board. Randy, my neighbor, uh, asked me, uh, if I'd be interested in serving on the planning board, um. I go, my mom's off in the rain. Oh, yeah, I might be able to serve on that planning board, and certainly I think we all need to do our bit, uh, having been that before. Uh, don't have any agenda or anything, but if you wanna serve, just wanna do my bit, and, uh, Randy asked me to come tonight to give me any questions, introduce myself, and that's all.
Anybody got any questions? Thank you. Or more?
Corey Martin, other than anyone shot around the center. I sure got the order of this, but I'm here to support the fire department.
Okay.
Um, and save the factor for the signs that we're talking about. I don't know if you want me to talk about that again.
Um, we probably got, wanna have a public comment section in that public here, that would be the best time to present, then it'll be evidence or fiduciary record. Okay, thank you. Uh, I've got a caller and us?
Yes. Hello, my name is Paul Hunt, I'm at two ninety Cash and Drive, I'm in Fort Mountain Acres. Um, I'm coming to raise concern and also appreciate advice from the board, from the board, and letting you guys have the connection to that good petition up there. A property that is above my house, but also above some of my fellow neighbors here has been, we believe that the property is trying to become a development, already mine as well, under five households. There's been several improvements in the property that we've noticed from Rose being neighbors, ever certain. Really, we have a heated water right and the water system runs to the property. Historically, there have been some damage caused to this water, along with this water property, and there's called some issues and emotional, yes, finances. We're worried that development, especially with houses above the water system and subject fields, could fall down and contaminate our water system. But also we want to check that water system and raise that certain glass. There's not really any diligence being done, we believe that there's none, which is being, uh, saw this property, uh, protect our rights and also we can check the, the integrity and nothing, no irrigation or these, that's the one we're using. The water system that's in place right now, especially with erosion, like it's been out looking at us, nothing has been improved, it's all running downhill. The property has figured a lot of paper and I believe it's gonna be, um, natural vegetation, trees, but, uh, and it's not a lot of issues with centralization and water flow. So I'd like to ask for advice, is there any connection you guys could give us?
Hold on. I would ask if Jeff knows anything or opinions of this, or hit back now with state. I know there is a amount of energy from players on their own property without a state currently left there.
Yes, I would invite Mr. Husk, if you need your contact information, if you're gonna stay through the whole meeting, I mean, even the afternoon, if you have information where you wanna bump me out the floor a minute, you just can kind of leave the staff and you're now reached out, you're the only one who wants uh, discuss this further than I used to every time, uh, so we're both, thanks.
Okay, I figured you'd have the most reasonable thing to reach out to. Uh, some of this stuff, you know, I would envision it ending up being a civil matter.
Yes.
That, you know, where they usually end up, but if he can lead you in some direction, there's people that might control certain aspects of it, it might clear the way for something to get stocks or, or new lease over exactly. As far as we know, he has no zoning permit, film permit, see anything pulled.
Not for some people, I think.
Okay. All right.
What kind of water system y'all access from a way of grabbing the ball?
It comes from an old gold mine. So they, when they use the mine, I guess, is they gave it in, flooded it, and that's where the water system resides. It then goes to two subject tanks that they, they use as most wars, then was their property. Um, the water line itself is all about fifty-six inches of ground. It's too traditional, I'm lashing, we put this here, we're gonna upgrade it, never had that in government, still being used today. With road improvements being done, that would happen, each one of them, we're worried that our rights that are given.
How many residents does this thing pay? Potentially.
Potentially.
How many is on the phone?
Eight.
One or rather, nine on the, that have needed rides.
But only four of them are using. That's not, maybe you're less.
Yeah, I'm very familiar with this. I'm growing up right here with that, so I mean, I know, I'm watching that, just kind of legal. Okay, so we'll get you hooked up with Mr. Young, and you'll complete and rock directions, that's right, you're my fan too. Anyone else have any public comment? There's general public comment? Here and now? We'll move on with an approval of the consent agenda, please.
I'd like to.
Thanks, Sandra, second? Second, thank you, Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, a special presentation.
Evening, Mayor and Council, uh, tonight, you've got your auditor Carl Shaw here to represent, uh, to, excuse me, to present the annual audit, this is, uh, something with your each no action required. Here we go through and stand, and you are welcome to ask any questions. Um, Carl, we hand it over to you, with this, just San Antonio, so you go watch and hear your person. Evening. Every year, under state law, we're required to have an audit. And this is a draft, will be audit three fourth of the year ended June thirty, uh, twenty twenty-two. Uh, usual, usually I will have the final version to bring to your meeting tonight, and I wanted to explain why I don't. Um, as you know, Mills River and a lot of other municipal governments received funds from the American Rescue Plan, or we call it Artman. And there is a particular kind of report that I, as the auditor, must present to you within this document that says I have reviewed how you have expended those funds. And I have been asking the states since June to give me an idea of what they think is appropriate language. And I have yet to see it. So if you look on your very last page of the draft, you will see my first paragraph. But it's not complete. And when I get the language, and I'm going to be searching diligently throughout the rest of this month, um, I will be able to put in writing that will be acceptable to the states that the language that, uh, you have been appropriate in the way you have spent your argument. You know, for the end of the fiscal year, it became, uh, an option for you, because we have less than ten million dollars in overall budget, that we could use what are, what the federal government is described as a revenue replacement way, and that's a very good method of extending the art of funds that have been made available to you. And, um, I just wanna be in compliance with whatever standard it is out there for the appropriate language. Um, there have been delays after delays. Uh, I just received an email from the School of Government dated November first, reporting guideline update. And so, okay, I'm still looking. But let me just say a few things about the report. Your property tax collections are right up around ninety-nine and a half percent. Uh, thank you, members of the residents of Mills River. Mills River's also been less by an increasing sales tax revenue stream. You know, if we go back to COVID in March of twenty, then we were thinking, you're gonna lose thirty percent of your sales tax, or fifty percent, depending on which prognosticator you talk to. Uh, it didn't work that way, thankfully, in fact, it was much the opposite, and it increased twice. And that has continued. So when you look at the financial statements here, you will see a significant, uh, profit, if you will. Um, you have in place at the end of the year, and you were working on your expansion, well, the, the building of the Mills River Pavilion. Um, and you continue to find your capital reserve fund, uh, for future expenses. Um, I didn't find any evidence of any statutory violations. Uh, once again, I enjoy working with Sue and Marv, everyone here at Dando and stuff, and um, they're always very cooperative to, you know. And I appreciate the opportunity of serving the talent in this capacity as your auditor. So if, when you have a chance to get through this draft, I'm very available to sue you or answer your questions specifically.
This show is all municipalities pretty much light and low verbiage for that.
Well, this particular one is, because I'm not comfortable issuing reports that, um, won't measure up to the scrutiny, just stick my behind that. Uh, it goes, the mayor's view of the revenue replacement theory running through our family. And in my reading of the federal registry, where the requirements are, there is a particular kind of audit engagement that can be performed for a municipal government that has chosen revenue replacement. That's what I want to report to you on, using that style of the and until I'm convinced that there's another option, that's where I'm going.
All right. You have a question? You know? What do you think?
Thank you.
Moving on to our resident agenda, I think Randy is going to try to add something at the bottom.
We're not supposed to, we have to be generally prudent.
Well, we may.
I think so. If we can have a discussion about extension of water to rely on.
Move on to our public hearing, uh, forty twenty twenty-two, oh two, public hearing of sign exemption.
Excuse me, Shannon, before we say question, we'll have a public hearing, we've never adopted, just the consent.
So I need a motion for our agenda. I'm not, thank you, Randy, second. Please send, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
And we'll, we'll. We're needing that, everyone joins the public, okay, somebody make this motion to go into public hearing. Text twenty-two motions. We move, Randy, thank you, second. Sandra, all in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the, um, public hearing before you this evening, uh, is in reference to a text and a request presented to you by September by the Mills River Fire Department. Um, I'll let, uh, Mike and I'll check our planning record, all the details for you. Um, Mike, I'm gonna hand it up to you.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Someone, one through my staff before, I'm just putting a bit of the public here on those lists, not lying, by some background. Um, so as the town manager mentioned, on September twenty-second, there was a pre-application presentation for a proposed text amendment for this council. Um, council voted that night, uh, greeted to, to allow the house to formally apply. Uh, we received the application September twenty-sixth, and the planning board considered the text amendment on October fourth and voted unanimously humanlessly to recommend this request and finding it consistent with the conference of plan. Uh, before I move on, uh, just know this public hearing has been properly noticed, uh, with published advertisement in Henderson, the lighting on October twenty-sixth and November second. Uh, so the basis of the request is that Mills River Fire and Rescue, um, plan to add a digital changeable copy sign or an L E D sign for their new, uh, headquarters fire station property at fifty-four hundred Doyleston Highway. Um, that is not currently allowed in code with official changeable copy signs, so prohibitive for up town. Uh, and staff work with Chief Livingston to develop those proposed languages before you tonight. Um, little background, on November tenth of twenty seventeen, that's when council adopted, uh, the digital changeable copy science regulation, so the first part in the place. And basically, those allowed LED signs by right on any general business product zone, properties that would be, and that's in a state of staff approval with a zoning, uh, sign credit. Um, and then properties not zone of general business, so any, any other property in town could apply the order. An LED sign with a special use permit, major special use permit, uh, with final group of council. That ordinance was modified on March thirteenth, twenty twenty, was established, basically the blanket provision of digital changeable copy science in the town. A little background on the headquarters fire station site. Um, it's currently zone general business, all the properties on that side of the highway adjacent to the fire station are also zone general business. And then the properties across Doyleston Highway are zone, commercial. Uh, and then one thing we also looked at, uh, was the traffic counts on the road, uh, since the, the purpose of this is to have public messaging, uh, for those driving by. And based on the, some traffic counts back in twenty twenty, over seventy thousand average daily trips for that roadway, uh, in front of the, the section in front of the fire department headquarters station. So the fire station is considered a public entity, uh, Henderson County, established with Mills River Rural Fire District. Um, the main station is on Schoolhouse Road, and there's three statements currently. And I looked up, uh, general statute, and basically, there's a definition that states a rural fire protection district is to be considered a municipal corporation organized for a special purpose, obviously fire protection and emergency services, and then because Mills River Fire and Rescue is a municipal corporation, and also by extension, a unit of government, their tax exempt, and basically considered public property. Um, there's some definitions around those terms, you know, the government, emergency services, um, and municipal corporation in your packet. Um, going into the actual policy proposed, um, so the, the proposed text modifies one fifty-four point two six O B of town zoning code, which is our sign ordinance section. And against the specific way, language is to allow for electronic changeable copy signs on public property and active use by each, a unit of government, emergency services agency, or municipal corporation. That, uh, there's been a number of Supreme Court decisions, uh, regarding sign regulations and allowances recently. Staff looked at those and tried and spun it, the U N C School of Government uh, to come up with this language, uh, quick summary, there was a case in twenty fifteen, Reed versus Town of Milford, and then recently a case, uh, just decided this year, City of Austin versus Reagan National Advertising. And when those cases reinforced is that sign regulations have to be content neutral. So you cannot determine a regulation based upon what is written on the sign. So if we have regulations for real estate signs, in order to determine it's a real estate sign, I need to read it, and that's what's prohibited. What is still allowed and what was emphasized in, uh, some of the Supreme Court decisions, although they were a little bit all over the place, is that regulations can still enforce time, place, and manner restrictions, so time being uh, duration of time of sign display, place being location or type of property, uh, everything from commercial, residential to public to property by zoning district, and then manner restriction being the type of sign, sign materials, sign construction, et cetera. And again, those are allowed, provided they are justified without reference to, with the content of the sign or the speech. They're narrowly tailored, tailored to serve a government interest, and that they leave open ample forms of communication for anyone else. Um, I did wanna bring to your attention tonight that, uh, there are sections of Mills River sign codes that are not in compliance with those provisions. We do call out real estate signs, political signs, cultural signs specifically, so to be compliant with these Supreme Court decisions and free speech law, um, my recommendation is that those be updated at some point. Um, so after hearing of the, the legal cases and the U N C School of Government guidance, staff felt um, the proposed text before you tonight was the most legally sound method to allow this, but also the most narrowly tailored that we can do within the balance of the law. Um, that's why it's written for public property and active use by, you know, the government, et cetera. So again, this language meets the constitutional limits, because it's based on place, type of property, being public property. Uh, and then the type of sign being the L E D sign or electronic, electronic changeable copy. And then the regulation also serves a government interest, because prohibiting electronic changeable copy signs throughout town preserves the aesthetic and rural character of the town, and that has been shown in legal cases to be a sound basis. Um, while digital signs exempted on public property, also serve a public purpose, because they're a useful tool to educate, uh, and serve the public. So again, I'll, I'll just summarize, the planning board considered this and recommended for approval, staff is doing the same. So the options, uh, for town council side are to approve, approve with modifications, again, this is just proposed language, um. We're, we're happy to talk through additional options, you can table for additional consideration or deny the text amendment. And then just remember with text amendments, we have uh, statements of consistency and draft ones in your packet, so if we do get to that tonight, that would have to be adopted as a separate motion. And I did just wanna state, um, staff's done some additional research, uh, since we received some informal feedback about the, the legal analysis behind this and the approach, and there, there are other options in changing the sign code that could still allow for this to happen, but it's a different approach and would change different sections of the code, but still limited within the sign ordinance, so I'll just say before, um, we close the public hearing or go down a road, if you would like to hear, I'm happy to talk about that, right? That's all I have.
Before we go any further, I, I need to ask any council members, and if anybody, any concrete or research that's on this, uh, subject property, property owner, or applicants. In the form of that. They're so amazing. Okay. So, does council have any questions for staff at this point?
I would like to ask Mr. Malachi, that, uh, staff is kind enough to draft up a, uh, text, uh, ordinance, mandating the test. Uh, and makes reference to, uh, attachment A, or I just wanted to, uh, clarify on what, what is referring saying.
Is this the ordinance for adoption?
Yes.
Okay. That was not included in the packet, I, I don't have that.
Is that just the actual text that was here in the ordinance?
The, 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 the ordinance is easily put together by myself in concert with the past clerk. And basically, it's the ordinance, this council has to adopt, to adopt the new regulation.
Exhibit A would be that.
Well, uh, attachment A is the actual text amendment application submitted by Chief Livingston, the actual red line zoning ordinance text that staff is proposing, it's attachment B. And there's like, there's several pages there, if you go to, I think, the second to last page, uh, the blue underlined and red striped out text is where the actual changes have been made. Like, what's up?
Mister, um, yes. The ordinance that was sent, emailed out to you would attach the language you already have, if, if it gets approved.
Okay, so when it says exhibit A for further details, it is.
That is the draft language.
It's approved, I'll give that better.
Any other questions? Uh, if that, we'd like to, uh, remain, and that'll be a great.
You're leaving.
Big sense, if you don't mind, give us your name and your title, please.
Uh, Rick Livingston. Uh, lifelong resident of Mills River, said when I was in college. I've been, um, Mills River Fire Department for forty-four years. I've been the fire chief of that department for twenty-two years. That looking.
Absolutely.
First, uh, let me be clear in saying that the town of Mills River and Mills River Fire Department have always had, in my opinion, an outstanding relationship, no problems whatsoever. And we're not here to burn bridges tonight, we're not here to get upset on fingers and that kind, that's not the intent. It's just that we have a problem, and I think that we can work together fix that problem. But please understand we aren't here to, uh, destroy relationships that have been cultivated over many years. Because I'd like to thank, uh, my board of directors, a few of my firefighters, and Jacob McLean. Jacob is our project manager for our news station, he's been with us from day one. And I'll, uh, I'll refer back to him here in ten minutes, but I'd like to thank those folks. Uh, you've already heard part of this when I presented to you a few weeks ago. Uh, I just wanna quickly revisit the reasons why we are like, hail this sign. Again, you've already heard this, but if there are folks in our area who have Again, you've already heard this, but if there are folks in our area who have it, uh maybe this will. Really to benefit you. Uh this would be a public safety tool. To address such issues and disseminate information such as. Uh forest service fire danger, uh ratings and situations, uh burning bands. Uh smoke alarm awareness. Uh community CPR classes, uh community first aid classes. And road closures due to. Various emergencies such as a wildland fire, uh missing person notifications uh. And again, I'm going through these quickly, uh elaborated more the first time I presented, so. Uh trying to build it faster this time since you've already heard this, but. Uh as I mentioned, the first time I presented, we have a. Large number of Alzheimer patients in Mills River, dementia patients, uh autistic. Uh folks who live in our community, we spend a lot of time looking for these folks. Uh searches and this sign would obviously help that and also. We would certainly be willing to use this sign if the town has information that you wanna. Throw out there and and get out the phone. Obviously, we're we'd be happy to. To include you folks in the use of this. Now, once again, you've heard all that part before, but I wanna provide you. Uh with some information that you haven't heard uh concerning this request. And as I go through this, I'm not, I don't mean to step on these things. Don't mean to point finger single people out. That's not it at all. Uh but I feel like these things are important um for the value of U C. To have knowledge about and to hear. This LED sign has been in our architectural plans since our planning process started. Uh for this new station five to six years ago. Again, Jacob, he has uh said those plans. If you would like to see them, they're stamped two thousand eighteen, uh he shows the sign. And by the way, those plans were approved by the town of Mills River. Number two, or secondly, uh. We were promised and and I get it, I understand. What the previous council did has nothing to do with y'all. I understand that. But just just hear me out here for a second. The previous council before part of you, the majority of you were elected. Uh that council promised us that we would be grandfathered in. Before the new rules and requirements went into effect. Uh Randy can attest to that, uh Brian Kimble's here, he can attest to that. Randy and I met, had a good productive meeting and. For whatever reason, things didn't pan out as we were promised. And. Most of you, maybe all of you, I I think know the reason for that or the reasons for that. And I'd rather not get into that publicly, but um. I I just feel like it's important for you to know that that this did happen. As you know, uh Michael mentioned this earlier, but I presented to your planning board a few weeks ago. And they approved this unanimously, which I think is significant in that it was unanimous. Number four. I spoke with two other attorneys directed in towns of Western North Carolina. Those two attorneys are are friends of mine. You know, it it's kind of like if you're diagnosed with a medical condition and you have some. Doubts about it or you're wondering about it, you get a second opinion. And I guess that's what you could say that I was the one when I reached out. To see what the thoughts were, uh some other attorneys who have dealt with this previously. They had the same, both of those attorneys had the same response basically, which was. Why is this even an issue? You're you're on sound legal footing. There's nothing to worry about. Uh it's been done all over the country um. What's the that's that's the the reaction that I got from them. And I think that some of your planning board members also spoke to some other. Uh municipal attorneys who provided basically the same information to them that I got from these two attorney. Number five. And I wanna make sure that all of you, in fact, everyone in this room. Fully understand this. Sharon Alexander is my personal attorney. That should tell you how much I think of Sharon. Uh I have all the respect in the world for Sharon. And by the way, uh she and I have not discussed this at all prior to tonight. Because I didn't feel like that was fair to Sharon or to Ibs. We haven't even talked about. Uh while Sharon is an excellent attorney, in my, at least in my opinion. Uh there is one thing that I want to point out um concerning her. Uh she always has been and she always will be very, very, very conservative. When she's providing you with legal advice, legal advice and recommendations. And that's not a bad thing. That's a good thing. Our attorney, I feel it this last year. It's my understanding uh through the grapevine that she's not in favor of this with the way that it is currently written. And I know that this. What I'm about to say is gonna be contradictory to what I have said to you for the past ten minutes, I understand. But anyone who knows me tells you that I. Everything that I do and everything that I say, I try to incorporate a lot of common sense into it. That's just me. Uh uh I believe in common sense. That's where I'm headed with this right now. If if Sharon advises against doing this or if she. Suggests modifying it or or hitting it from a different angle, uh. That's what you need to do. It's common sense. You hire her legal counsel. And the right direction to you. And my advice to you is she's dying dead, so listen to what she has to say. So again, that's contradictory to what I said the last ten minutes, but my. But the point, the point that I wanna make is this. Everyone in this room knows that there is a legal. And an acceptable way to make this happen. That I think would garner Sharon's blessing. All we're asking of you is to find that solution. That will allow this to happen legally and put everybody on sound legal footing and and no issues. There, a- as all of you know, there is. At least a small amount of risk. Involved with pretty much anything that we do in life as leaders and managers. There's nothing that we don't do that doesn't involve some risk. We all overlook that, but you know it's a fact. So. Please keep this in mind as you consider our request. And as we move forward, if we're looking for another. Angle to hit it from or whatever, please just remember that there's risk involved in everything we do. We can be sued for. Shannon can say me if they're looking at him wrong. Everybody knows that. So, you know, these are just things that I feel like are important. Thank you for your time and I are Jacob McLean. And again, if he has the plans, if anybody would like to see that, if you'd like to see the stamp date on it. Be welcome to uh but thank you and. If you have any questions, Jacob or I will try to answer them. Thank.
Okay, if uh. That's all the party presentation, I would ask for any public comment. From any part of the public on this matter, you will be limited to the three minutes. Anybody with any public comment on this matter?
Hello, sir.
Hello, how are you? Uh Rick obviously read up on paper because he did post it to me and I was gonna say he's been. I'll let you give me your uh. So my name is Brian Kimble. Do you probably know me? Uh I live off South Mills River Road and well within the town limits. And I'm coming tonight to basically speak on behalf of the fire department. It's one of the things they're asking. And to do that, I wanna give you guys a little bit of history of the uh. Electronic changeable copy sign for this. So I served on the Mills River Planning Board from two thousand eleven to two thousand twenty. During that time, one of the issues that we consistently dealt with was the ordinance related to electronic changeable copy signs. If my memory serves me correctly, we dealt with this issue at least four, if not five separate times over nine years. Uh so I wanna take a moment to talk about that and to talk about why it relates to where we are. Playing or reviewed and tweaked the ordinance over nine years and created an ordinance founded by input. Sauced of discussion and research. From the planning board's opinion, it was well written and it was inclusive for users. It included guidance for the color of LEDs, the intensity from the time of day, overall size, swirling rates. Even the DOT was brought in to outline the requirements to avoid any hazards for those drawing past said signs. The ordinance did not allow for flashing or otherwise obnoxious examples. That people commonly use as scare tactics to hide behind or justification to not allow them. February fourth, two thousand twenty planning board meeting was the last time this ordinance was reviewed by the council. Was reviewed, went counsel, then sent it back to the planning board for examination. Mills River Fire Chief Livingston was present. I was the chairman of the planning board at this time. He spoke during the comment period as to the need for the fire department to have a sign in place at their new station. To assist in the distribution of public information on safety and public welfare. No one was opposed to this type of use. And I don't believe that any of you sitting up here today are either. At the same meeting, the planning board sought more direction from council members who were present. As they have requested it to be placed on the agenda. Planning board's discussion had several conclusions at evening. There was. There was also no one, the issue, several conclusions at evening. The issue was not the signs themselves, nor was it the way the ordinance was written. There was also no one who could provide examples. How the ordinance violated the other famous painting play part that is using Mills River, that it will destroy the rural Mills River character. The issue that were raised were easily trackable. Were easily trackable were the result of the town's failure to enforce the ordinance. This sentiment was echoed at the same February board meeting by now Councilman John Young, who spoke and was listed in minutes. As to his concern to the town's creation of ordinances without the resources to enforce them. As the discussion continued, it shifted to simply doing away with the allowed use. The consensus was the fire department had a valid use for a sign that would be of benefit to the community and that the town and council. Would work to buy to find a viable solution before removing the allowed use that failed to happen. Mills River is different now. The issue of enforcement is no longer a topic. As the town now has a code enforcement position open for staffing. The town has the capability to do as required to enforce the reasonable ordinance. And permits the use by the department along with the rest of the licenses. There's still the old age fallback of the concept of a rural Mills River. The fire department exists in the general business district, which cannot be remotely even considered as rural. These types of uses are already exist in this district and would expect to be present in the business business district. I know there may be questions or concerns that we've talked about with the current path for allowing the stop and use. The path explored tonight is not viable. Do not stop your work. There are clear clear improvement paths for this used to be allowed. Was allowed in the past. Find a path that works, move forward and put this to ban once for all. There are far more pressing matters that are destroying the landscape, seeing the Mills River beside signs.
Anyone else for public comment? We will move on to uh council discussion and potential questions I might have to. Other options.
Yeah, so right now, um again, the proposed text is just to change the part of the ordinance dealing with. Digital changeable copy signs. Another method I saw that uh is in city of ours, city of Henderson, those organs. Is to include government signs in the exempt sign section. It's actually the next section of our ordinance and it's not in front of you tonight, but uh section one fifty four point two six one. Is signs exempt from obtaining a sign permit. And it does currently list public public governmental signs. Um but when you actually look at that definition, it says a governmental sign uh is closer to a traffic control sign, a street sign. Speed limit sign, warning sign, something like that, so. Um I had already looked at that when Chief Livingston came to discuss this. Um and again, didn't deal with eligible sign shit within that definition. That definition can be modified uh to include. Government signs, hard launch, I'll say um. Anyway, the city of Provar and city of Hendersonville, Hendersonville basically have the same section in their code. Signs exempt from obtaining a sign permit, while our definition is very narrowly tailored to. Things like speed limit signs, traffic signs, theirs is a little more broad. One of them specifically says uh any sign connected to a public building or facility is exempt from a permit. Um the other one I think mentions, I don't know if it's public property specifically, but. And just mentioned governmental signs are exempt and then has a more broad definition of what that encompasses. So that's one option. Instead of changing the LED sign section. We can go to the exempt sign section, modify the government or public sign definition and just exact it completely. I'll just say that the ramification of that, that any sign. Proposed by any governmental body or however uh council would choose to define it would be exempt from any standards or permitting requirements. Um that's one option. Another option is to do something and put it in the sign code for a master sign plan. And this is something I've also seen other municipalities use um where I previously worked in the triangle as well. And it's a purely legislative this decision that uh again, we would have to spell out the process. It'd be a whole new application. Uh process and in the sign code specifically, but long story short, it would be a legislative decision coming to council. Um and the decision can be based on nothing but opinion, personal opinion. Um but again, that that's a little more complex. And again, the reason staff chose the textbooks before you tonight is because. We were trying to keep it as narrowly tailored as possible while within the balance of the law.
Any questions?
So first of all, you know, I'm, I don't know what's been said. I haven't been at your previous meetings. And and I, I want Rick and everybody from fire department to understand, I don't oppose it. I, I know that you all may have heard in the meeting of conversations that I've had with them as a staff and I'm not sure. What you understand about my opinion. So in, in what I, I read everything Rick said generally that everything you do has risks. And everything you do has particular risks of resulting in litigation. There is an organization that is very active that sell purposes to enforce the Bill of Rights. The First Amendment is most important to them. And this is, this is a First Amendment issue. The law is an absolute mess. I had agree on what Mike said. It's constitutional because. There's no way that any lawyer is going to tell you this constitution. Because the Reed versus Town and Gilbert case is a case where six justices wrote a case. So there's not truly a majority obtained. But the one that people preach is the majority has some language in it that says. One of the defenses of that, that sign ordinance that was being attacked is they're saying it distinguishes based on who's signing it, who's doing the speech. And this is, that doesn't make any difference. That, that you can, you can make something that is, that is allowed to give. Favorable treatment to one type of speech over another, which is absolutely unconstitutional. By distinguishing between who's saying, as you know, this person is going to say something you agree that this person is. So the fact that it's been it's a, a public entity that even if it's a fire department. Doesn't make it necessarily pass constitution. But what I want you all to understand so you can evaluate your risks is that what, what the morass of cases have done. That has created nothing but gray here. And what they say is there's two stand. If, if the ordinance is content and. And it has to be for a substantial government limits. And, and that's, who knows what that is. It's subjective, but that's a low bar for your past protection ordinance. If it is content, then it has to serve compelling government limits. And I don't know what that means anywhere anybody else in here, but I would say that all the purposes of this sign. Are arguably compelling, but that may be just a stench because. Has it's not, there's not a constant interest. It's not going to be something that, that we know about today. And, and somebody can say none of those things may ever happen. There may never be something that's urgent. Then we get down and it's going to be at one place and you know, it's going to be one, one. Place of publication and, and there's other ways of getting those urgency doubt. Other people would come in and say. It doesn't have to be, I mean, you have Eagles has, I mean, you go out in a old fashioned way and put the letter stuff, you, you know. How can you say it's compelling them to be able to do it electronically rather than do it physically? So what I want you to understand is. This could be absolutely fine. It has, I think that your risk is that somebody would take issue with. Um some commercial business that can make money on having an electronic sign where they can change it quickly. Um could be kind of associated with ACL or some other First Amendment treaty. And this is what they do. They try to make law by suing entities, particularly government. Um to try to either change laws, clarify law. So my concern isn't as much that you would do this and ultimately lose that. As it is, you would have to have that part because, because of the question. Um if, if I were to be in that fight or ask which side would you ever have, I'd ever have your side. Um it is a public entity. It's a, it's an absolutely essential government service that's being brought about by the department. And, and I can think of a lot of other things that Rick didn't mention. I can see most of these before. Um that would justify the need to have a the immediate need to get something up on site in those river. So I don't oppose it. I want you to go into your house and open that it is a hot button area. In the court system right now. And certainly um there, there is, there is some risk of being sued. Even if, even if it's ultimately determined to be bound. I'm happy to answer any questions, but I know it's a lawyer's words. I saw some questions. On airplanes they have done in two thousand eighteen and they were both. And we have heard from Rick that they will promise they could have a sign. We heard from Mr. Kimball who was. I believe on, was he on council or just on the planning board?
Planning board.
Plan board. So you were on council?
Yes. It's my third month on camera and I thought that I has a deal worked out. Restrictive ordinance that we have now to go into the back twenty. I got school. My road was dirt after that. It didn't happen. Uh so that's why we're here today.
Uh what's all this laid out and we've got people here going to testify, can they not be grandfathered in? So that's not generally, there's vested interests, but that's what grandfathering is. And those are pretty specifically defined by the statute and then the face. And it requires more formal governmental action than what the town took at that time. That can be something you all can certainly find that it's grandfathered in since there's, there's no barrier to that. But if anybody challenged it, I'm not sure it would, that would be. We've got documentation. I don't know the purpose of those plans were approved, but wasn't there?
I, I only, I don't know what happened in one case number. I only approved the Mills River site plans and issued the zone and park. Last summer.
So I mean, I, I would want to look at what was approved and the purpose for that. Could we get you to look at it? Absolutely. I didn't, I didn't know anything about any of that until we. Just talking about.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, staff didn't look at that and we would have taken an easier route if we could have, but now. I issued that approval after starting this position here, you know, it was. In May of twenty one, in the sign, I approved the Mills River site plan was one of my first projects. That was after the ordinance was passed. And additionally, our sign code specifically states. You have to pull a sign permit separately from a site plan. Um because there's additional documentation about the structure, the size, the sign base, the copy area, et cetera. Um and that part, that permit was not, you know, submitted or issued or anything. So there is, there's.
I was gonna say, as you stated, there's stuff one or before you started here. So I would rather have Sharon move in it.
That's completely fine. The best thing only begins when a permit is issued, not, not when someone draws up plans on a piece of paper.
Thank you, Shane.
Well, the question I keep asking myself is why are they prohibited in the town apparently? What was the significance of these councils? Well, and um you know, I, I don't necessarily expect an answer, but. There's a reason why they're prohibited. And if, if we do a carve out for public entities, you know, basically. We may be undermining the reason why they're prohibited. So that's why I've come to my fat little finger of the meeting when we first took this up. Saying that, you know, if you open it up, one, you have to open up to everybody. And I think that's where we're going to land. Is that the first commercial advocate that comes in here and says they want in the text. Is there a competitive disadvantage? And I went to the planning board meeting where they took this issue up and one member Jim made very cogent arguments about. The importance and the value of them, especially in a commercial setting. So unless the reason. We prohibit them currently is different than what I perceive it to be, which is. We don't want Mills River to look like anywhere in USA. We want Mills River to look like Mills River and actually look different than other towns that are similar sized. But if that be the case, if you allow it and you carve out, give special treatment to one party, not being public. And if you do it the way it's currently presented, uh we give free. Access to these signs to Marlo and Mills River Schools, the NC Fire Service, the DOT, the City of Hendersonville, Town of Mills River. So I mean, they can do it by right moving forward and then we have to deal with. The commercial community and that's a more political, you know, maybe won't get sued, but politically that looks bad is. Why we treat people differently. So that's why I'm comfortable with, it's not that our department wants one and they've justified. Reason for having one. I just don't see ways being proposed with doing this text amendment. Of uh giving them access to the sign without granting it to everybody that is a qualified advocate, that be in commercial private. As well as public.
Well, me and I'm councilman, my son ordered to start being grass. I was opposed to denying digital copy signs to whoever wanted. You know, I felt like it was a good mark of the plane. You know, uh for businesses, never even really thought of the fire department at that point, guys, is a reason. But you know, if I come back here tonight, we got thousands of string of lines across. Burnt bush, which is going to be across the road. If we were to buy a distraction. You know, I mean, and we don't have Christmas lights coming here. Maybe sometimes discovered another stuff. Um, you know, what is rural yet for twenty point two and over. You know, we keep talking about rural, you know, look at this million dollar fire station. You know, some of these other things going up, you know, I think we need to just somehow find a way. Follow some of these trends, whether we like them as old time or not. Uh we're all carrying cell phones. It's got computers on them. Uh we've got LED lights in our house. Some of them go off and go off fast. Some of them come always becoming. Have a sign on the side of the road, but Joe gives us some general information. There's no way Shannon can be a host and she knows all the rest, especially if it's safest. In from businesses, you know, I thought about it as a full up return as well, not anymore. You know, at the marathon, hot biscuits. And then the next thing you see is the enterprise. Is that, and that's, you know, I'm morning in the morning, so I don't want a hot biscuit. I don't make out for. You know, they may have something else on there tomorrow. It's a good marketing tool for those folks as well. Uh so I'm not opposed to anybody having one in my seat, but there's more of the people here. You know, needing to make an decision. If it was up to me, the, the sign ordinance in general, it'd be totally rewritten. Would take, you know, it would take months to do, but in my being, it's got a bunch of law in it. For nobody is not, not needed. With that being said, I mean, I'll open up to any more questions that I'm going to start and. But I know everybody's going to agree with that. I just, I got a position to stay here and I got to speak alone.
So Michael, well, Sharon's here, you know, did you explain that on line mail eighteen? Why can't, why can't we get into this ordinance here? Why can't it just say uh emergency service?
Um because then you're singling out specific. But by profit and tire, you can currently regulate signs by zoning this. I know there's grounds for commercial versus non-commercial regulations. But to single out a specific user and I don't know the legal grats behind that uh and in my mind is not the. I, I would defer to Sharon on that.
Well, we need is your, I mean, it does say emergency.
Yeah, why can't we take out all the other language and just leave the services that it's.
Well, you could. That's.
But I mean.
Marginally more risky because as Michael said, you're, you're um singling out one particular kind of sort.
It's.
So what you would be asked is tell us what the state's interest is in allowing them and nobody else to, to have those terms of signs. But couldn't, but couldn't a govern, couldn't a unit of government have to be, and you're right out here at the road. I mean, devil's advocate, you put a sign with the same kind of information on it that other people or maybe different people would see. And those that will see them wanting fire section.
So the city of the bar. So they have a sign on this, but they exempt themselves in their sign. Now, so is that something like what Mike was talking about earlier?
It is. And so you do that now, but then you narrow it so much. It's really just traffic signal type of signs that, that are your intent. That you could exempt yourself on give.
We're going back to what Mike was talking about earlier. Could we not run in there, emergency services and so that would be exempt?
I think what would be. Say would be to say any entity providing an essential governmental service, a traditional governmental service, which. Our final clearly is. Rather than because there's others signs emergency services now. Most others are, are provided by them. There are some entities that from time to time by, or you could say public service. Which is almost like governmental, but maybe a little advanced. Did it say fun that documents, fun, commercials and some of these? So that way, if you have life, I wouldn't come, you know, you know, they would. Thought the able to put one up for a part time thing, but the fire department is problematic. And I believe if we do it from emergency service, then we'd also have to, whatever, including events. I was, that's what I was. That would just be two. I think there's danger in doing that as opposed to saying the entity providing a public service. And public services are pretty narrow on this type of. In my opinion, there's no question the fire department.
And I'm just going to ask you right hand and hope making, is the risk higher? To throw forward with this text amendment versus potentially just grandfathering it. From back data and information that goes out in front of us today.
Think there are risks to the town. This, the problem is the risk to the fire department is if you grant on their end and somebody challenges it, they got investment in the ground potentially.
That's where I'm going. So I would. Like to ask fire chief if, if that's. If you want to weigh that situation at. When, so do you like to go down that road with us if we elect to grandfather in to avoid all this other contamination, as I call it? You know, text and, you know, garbage to accept the challenge we potentially grandfather you in. You know, and with knowing if we get challenged on this, it could potentially have to come down someday.
Most of my board is, is here or not, but my gut feeling and I think they would agree, we would be. Excellent. Well, we would be agreeable with that. Any of you board members, would you disagree with what I just said? Are you good with that?
I think the challenge we come from outside of our town, of course, you know, I don't think we'll be challenged in any town, but. I just want to make it aware if we get down that road, we do this, that it costs a dollar, you will have to overcome some.
I would like to ask, I have a free counsel here and pick up for Randy to talk about the city of Brevard exempting themselves. Rather than emergency services, because the town exempt itself be the only exemption. And obviously any entity that provides town services. Set more narrow exemption where basically it has to be. Town itself, or in this case, three contracts of the fire department. Where they do. They're exempt.
I'll just change the.
This isn't the grandfathering. If Sharon sees paperwork from four or five years ago and says there's a snowball chance of. Pending this, the grandfather could plan B be even more narrow scope that just examines town and mill converted services.
I think that would be a very good way to approach it. But with expanding the definition of of the town's exemption, as as Michael said, right now, the way it's written is just from the. So you need to have to rewrite that.
I I found the bar working on some. Here to hear that, please, okay. So, um. Basically, it's under the exempt sign section. It says government signs. Official signs installed by units or agencies of local government having jurisdiction within the city of the bar and the agencies of the state of North Carolina or the federal government. Are exempt from the regulations established in the session for the purposes of this section, official signs shall include any sign correct by the city of the bar. Such signs, signs may be illuminated, flashing, or moving as required. And Hendersonville's a much shorter, uh, it's under their section, signs not requiring apartments, so exempt as well. And they actually single out a couple of different users. They say, uh, sites for churches or public buildings, including both of course, lighted or outlined if not to exceed that the conspiracy area. Such signs must meet yard set requirements, et cetera.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know.
But my preference. Move forward with the attack that you're proposing. Trying to exempt the grandfather, but I would feel more comfortable with the council member. Down turning. Looked at it and gave us an opinion whether that's viable option, or it turns out to be. Well. There's all sorts of. Uh, problems than. I was trying to, let's not take upon either thing we had. Narrowly scope that if you just us. Exempt ourselves to the town. Maybe I'll open it up to taking this or every government.
So I'm more happy to ask for some advice here. At this point, should we close the public hearing section of this? Um. Or keep discussing to see which way we're headed. Because we're kind of on two different tracks in this public hearing, obviously.
Um. I mean, right off the top of my head, I think that the best thing I've been is he says the public hearing. Would they start? Then what we can do.
Yeah.
Wouldn't that be better than adjournment at this point?
I I would absolutely agree. Um, my my only concern is. Are we making too much of a change to what was advertised?
Well, I I actually. What I'm thinking is, if if there's a substantial change, then then we would have to just have the next. Um, time and say it just then adjourn it.
Okay.
And have a have a different notice go ahead.
Yes. Then recess it, go back into your public hearing. Whenever you say with possible new language, and then we'll decide at that point whether it has to be re-announced.
For another year.
Okay.
And then if it, and if it can be grandfathered, then when you open the hearing the next time, we can just announce that in recess. Take, take any further public comment.
Okay, so before I ask permission for a recess date. I want you to take you to research some of the center.
Thanks.
So make it out to our first meeting in December, while they're only meeting initially. So. If someone made a motion to recess. We left you the name and and said, thank.
Not the motion for recess until December the eighth, so public hearing.
Thank you, Sanders. Uh, second, any discussion on this before recess? And I'll say.
Nah.
Right now, let it go. I'm glad to say the support. You know, I say this. We'll give them a while, but you got to get out. So you want to stay if you want. It'll be, we say.
Okay, and the possible version, possibly your advice would stand to be correct or not. Okay, so when you're.
And then.
Okay, that's, that's right.
Uh, no.
I don't. Well, no. I'm excited. You're right. I think that's.
We're in a chair. I know it's going to be. Oh, I don't think so. Yeah. Previously, that's the thing. Should be. I mean, that was intentional. It was, but in the same time, other sunlight counselor. It's shocking. I mean, they, they, I mean, that never was. But I could done it for him. In this. First. You know, there's nothing that needs to be. You know, I I tried, but that one was your. Which I don't believe. And I think. I mean, whoever heard you about.
Yeah, we're we're.
Okay. I know.
We still. I mean. I would.
Whenever we sit, whenever we see, then we'll decide. I'm sure, yes. Yes. What they've even, I've been taught is. We we. Um, we can go ahead, we could go ahead and advertise. We'd never mind, never mind. They stood up to say, never mind, I'm getting a help. Well, and we advertise them lightning, and they're not publishing between Christmas and New Year's. We've already moved a couple of public hearings because, and a more of a judgment meeting, because we can't get the advertisement in. It's and people get mad if you switch the times news just for one meeting. We've been called out on it, and it was last August. Was the secondary. Yeah, it was last.
Thank you, Karen.
That's right.
Okay, we're back from a little recess at La Celle here. Uh, we'll move on in our regular agenda to manage meadow and maintain the meadows. So this evening, we're gonna have a continued discussion from one of your guys on bringing. Mostly management, uh, and the and the back farm property. Uh, Nicole Park Strickers, working on that with Brian Hopkins from the official wildlife, and Nicole being taken over there. And.
Sure, just a real quick background. Um, so as David said, staffs were doing Brian Tompkins, the special wildlife service. Um, on the process of converting our old hay agriculture field, they're getting more managed, um, natural meadow. Um, as identified through the park integration master plan. Um, so he's here today to discuss many questions you had, just kind of present to you what that looks like, the processes, the timeline, that sort of thing. And that is also since been asked that we look at. At the the bottom part of that meadow, um, approximately four acres is called for to make it. Open green space, so that's. As creations and things. All those big up soccer and that sort of thing. And so we've been working with WGLA engineering. Come up with a plan for that. So he's also here. So, um, once we hear from Mr. Tompkins. Um, and you have any questions, um, WGLA can blow them into the touch your back here. And we can talk through that. So with that, I'm going to turn to the word, Mr. Ryan Tompkins.
I think that's a really documented, I don't know if he allowed or I don't know. Uh, yes, if you care, just go if you got any. It's just kind of a. Sorry, I'm watching. The. Yeah, but.
Did you have an excellent?
So I'll make sure you get a plan to start here.
If you need it, I'll get his back.
Oh, it's fine. No, 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 I don't want to. You need a clicker? I just did it.
All right, we're getting there.
Daniels did it, so. That's it. Thank you. Yeah. All right, um, thanks, everybody. I really appreciate y'all having me here tonight and. As I say, my name is Brian Tompkins. I'm with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service. Uh, I work out at Asheville Field Office. And, uh, I I just wanted to start this too by just saying, you know, I really appreciate. The thought and getting your master plan and looking at some different options. I'm. Kind of looking at at some, some other things to put onto your landscape out here that I think not only will, uh. Uh, work with other parts of the community, but also maybe even be a draw for other folks outside of the community. I think what you're, what you have on your plan is something that. Really could be, uh, kind of a regional, um, kind of showcase. So, um, with that, I I also, I got a little presentation here, and I figured this tonight would just be kind of an informational. Uh, and I just wanted to. I've been talking with Nicole for a good part of the year on this, and. It kind of seemed like there might have been some questions, and maybe I just wanted to make sure that, you know. I'm kind of. I've kind of offered my services in a way to help, uh, and kind of manage this, or or at least kind of help with some of the management of the home ground work and. Being kind of a consultant on it through my job. I'll give you a little history on that as far as of why. Things. We could just. If I just play, yeah. I did, uh, yeah. All that for you. Okay, yeah, just one, just one. Thank you. So first off, I mean, you you brought that, uh, mine was fishing wildlife service here. Um, one of the things, uh, I've been working on early succession and, uh. Uh, open grassland restoration projects for a good part of ten or twelve years now. Um, it's something that even official wildlife service. Uh, we've had really put a lot of focus on pollinator, uh, conservation over the years. And, you know, and I I kind of get that, you know, you you all have a lot of different reasons as to why you're wanting to do this and. But one of the things that I I think that I might embody this is is some of that experience. We've been putting that on the ground. We've been doing these things on large and small scales. And we've learned a lot of the dangers. So, uh, I think some of that, you know, I I want to bring to the table on the other side of the pollinator conservation, from cereal boxes to the. Uh, you know, commercials on TV, everything you hear on the news these days is is, you know, we're losing pollinators. And that's not, that that's not exaggerating. Um, a lot of our pollinators are very important for our food and resources, for our agricultural crops. And and we are seeing those losses kind of across the board. One of the things that everybody kind of relates to is monarch butterfly. You know, we've assessed due to the dramatic, uh, decline in in population, we've seen about eighty nine percent decline in population over the last thirty years. In that species, something that everybody sees all the time. We're even looking at possibly listing that as, uh, it in the in the coming years. So anyway, open early succession habitat is another thing that. Uh, is missing our landscape. Um. Back. We've gone through about a hundred yards, a hundred years of forest, uh, kind of been beat into our heads that, oh, you're always planting trees. You want to do something environmental, plant trees. Well, one of those, one of the habitats, environmental aspects that we've overlooked is these open grasses. Our our mounds and our bee mo, a lot of this steak used to be open grassland, it's pretty European colonization, so. Another reason there. And also, I got mentioned, I think it also did offer some outreach. And educational opportunities, uh, to folks and bring in some. Uh, some of the benefits of this is increasing wildlife. It's not just about pollinators, it's birds too. Uh, a lot of ground nest and birds and a lot of the species that really. Don't see much anymore. Uh, basically because some of the structures missing, as you see on these pictures up, uh, kind of on the top right right here. That habitat structure is important for many species, and so, uh. You you're not only helping butterflies and bees and some of the pollinators with that, but you're you're bringing in birds, and that's a. I don't know if anybody is familiar with the, with the, uh, bird watching community, but. They're rapid, and you know, that's a huge group. They're all over this place, and they, you know, and they also, uh, bring money. Um, in the community. So I think things like this and what y'all got planned has opportunity for 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 that kind of situation too, but. Um, meadows also offer better carbon storage than forests. Erosion control, you look in the bottom right. Many of the native plants that we use in these native, uh, meadow restorations. The roots grow anywhere from six to eight feet deep. Some of them get up to fifteen feet deep. Most of your grasses, your best views that you grow, everybody's long. Is usually no deeper than four to six inches. So, you know, big, big change there. Uh, and then the last two things I got on here. I think there's some of maybe the main reasons. And enough time. Because it is, it's an aesthetic thing. It it allows, it adds color. It's a change to the landscape. You guys have plan, uh, plans to put paths through these, and I think that's awesome. Um, you know, you you you're bringing, uh, some other variety to your farm. And then on the last beat, there's is maintenance cost. One of the things when you do put these in, it's not long. You're not out there mowing it. A couple of times a week or a couple of times a month. Um, you're really only mowing it about once a year once this thing gets established, and we'll talk about that establishment. We got the timeline in a minute. But the maintenance costs on some of these things that I've worked on in the past. I got started on solar farms, um, in doing early succession habitat on solar farms. And on most farms, what we've seen, even with partial plantings on those, we start cutting, mowing, and maintenance cost down to about four. Um, mainly just because they're just not out there having to mow those areas anymore. And, uh, so that that that's a big point that that I'll probably touch on several more times here. So, the biggest thing that I wanted to go into here tonight too, to kind of. And as y'all are moving forward with this. Uh. It it's just kind of walking through the steps and hopefully maybe, uh. Clear up some some confusion, or maybe, you know, uh, answer some questions that you might have or have had on this, as you've been thinking about it. But, uh, there are several things to establish in these. Um, site quality assessment, I'm not going to go into that very much. You got a wonderful place out here. One of the best things that I noticed about that, the first time I walked out here with Nicole. Is that you don't have a lot of pressure from invasive species around it, and that's one of the big things that we deal with on these a lot of times is that we'll put these things in, and then next thing you know, it's being overcome with kudzu or whatever else. You don't have a lot of that here, and the way it's separated out from. Any of the other, uh, overgrown areas, you have buffers. You have buffers where you can maintain and you can keep this area kind of clean, so. Site quality assessment, it's one of the best sites that I've, uh, looked at in ten years for real, as far as those types of things go. Um, site prep is the next thing, and prep and planning are going to be the two biggest, but site prep is. Just like I I mentioned in that, in the packet there. Um, you know, it's really the most important thing you're going to do on this site. One, these are all native plants. They're, they all are, uh, pioneers. They they come into disturbed areas. They, uh, they need a clean slate to grow on. And so that's kind of where the site prep comes in. And so there's going to be, uh. Uh, some issue or some some definite attention paid to that. Uh, part of this plan, and we'll go through it here in a second. And then planting. Uh, it's fairly straightforward, but then the management side, we'll go into that in a second too. So on the site prep though. The main thing about it is, like I said, you want a good kill. You want a good clean slate to start these seeds on. The seeds aren't cheap. Um, uh. When you put these costs out over the long run, though, it does come out to be a cheaper, uh, uh, version cheaper than than a regular lawn. Um, but site prep, so what it will be, um, uh. You know, unfortunately or fortunately, I I come from a, from school with the thought that. Uh, things done right. You know, there are right ways to do this as far as herbicide treatments, and that's going to be when you're dealing with such a big area like that out there. Um, herbicide treatment is really about the only way you can do. If we were doing it in the yard, you have a little garden, we could solarize, we might could dig it up, we might could do something like that. But when you're talking about fifteen acres. It's too much. And so. The only way we can do that, and the other side thing with herbicide treatment is that it takes a couple of treatments throughout growing season. So the way this will work is. Uh. Usually try to hit it early in the spring. You let, you kill things off, you let it green up again midsummer, you kill it off again, you let it green up again, some of the late season, uh, vegetation. Vegetation and you kill that back again and then plant later on that. So. It's going to be several cycles of that out here. So that's one thing that I wanted to make sure that. Kind of everybody, you know, had a good grasp of because it is, it's not like a tomato garden where you go out there and plow it up and you plant things and it comes up. It's going to be a. A little while of getting this in place. The timing, like I said, is going to be late in the process of seeding. And if nothing else, so just remember that this is the most important step. The reason I want to point this out too, though, is that this is going to be a period of time where. It would need to be probably flagged off. I don't know. I don't think, I don't know that it's very used very much. Right now, but you know, if you would want to flag. And then planting. Usually when we're dealing with big size. We use a seed drill. I see on the bottom down there, try to pull that around. They can do fourteen, fifteen acres. It won't take very long, half a day. These plants are also different. It's not like you put them in the spring and they grow in the summer. They need cold stratification. So you usually put these seeds down in December or January. So as I talked about with the prep, in the spring you'll spray, summer you'll spray, late summer you'll spray. And in between there, we plant cover crops. So you'll have some green up out there. I mean, it won't look just completely dead all the time. But then come, come winter, we'll put down seed. Those seeds are going to sit there for a few months. It ain't going to look like anything. And then during, you'll start getting sprouts. But the, the good thing with. The seed drill though, you're not having to break ground. It's going to lay the seed at the right depth. You get a lot better germination. A higher success rate on your project and you're not having to go through all the permitting and things that. You know, that I guess we're probably talking about a little later when you start kind of cutting saw and kind of soil out there. And, and then finally, once this is planted, these are all native seeds. They've, they've evolved to this landscape, to this, to this environment over, over the millennia. You don't have to water them. They're kind of adjusted to it. They'll germinate. One thing I will say that as it starts to come in. It has a, kind of a. Change to it. Like the first year you'll get, there's certain species in the seed mix. You use these really high species. Variety seed mixes. And so the first year you'll get a flush of like one or two species. And so it'll be, you know, I'll show you some pictures in a second, all yellow. And it's really pretty. It looks great, but over the coming years, it'll actually. Become more and more diverse. It'll get more and more color to it. It's kind of interesting to watch on that. But just kind of, you know, as, as this all starts moving forward and we're looking at. You know, a little ways out, but that's, that, that is kind of, you see it the first year, you're like, oh man, everything's same. It just looks the same. It will be like that for years, so it will change on it. And then, and then this is my last slide. I think, you know, as I stated, your plan is, is really quite impressive. We've been talking about several things Nicole and I have. We've looked at this plan quite a good bit and discussed it. And I think she's gotten a few proposals. On it and, you know, so I think the project's ready to, to move forward. Some of the things we'd have discussed though is like the butterfly garden, as it was put into that meadow on there. I think it would be good to remove that out and put it somewhere else. Number one, you can do it at a different time. You can go ahead and have that in and kind of even have an outreach opportunity where you start talking about the species and plants that are going to be in the full meadow. You can have that in, you put them in as plants, they come in fast. But it probably needs to be pulled out because if you put it in that meadow, it's going to be impossible. Just keep it from getting overgrown with species that you're planting out there. So that was one, one, one change on that. So your objectives are really just to plant, plant this area, get a natural meadow in, your materials and costs. Most of that is really just going to come in on your seed costs and your prep because it is kind of a multi-cycle thing. Timeline again, I just wanted to put that on there so you have a good idea. If you, you know, everything starts moving forward right now. This winter, planting will be completed. Come spring, you would do your first spray. Next summer, you do those, those spray sequences, those herbicide treatments. And then next winter, winter twenty-three, twenty-four, that's when you'd seed that meadow. And those establishment periods, like I said, that first year, you're going to get a flush of certain species and it'll change over. And that first year, you might have to mow it as well during the summer, just more. Just to, if you get an influx of, say, Johnson grass or something comes up. That you don't want before it goes to seed, you're going to want to cut it. On this site, I really, I really don't think that's going to be the issue. I just throw that out there. And then the maintenance again. Like I said, we just get back to the once a year mowing, once it's established after that first year. And you're cutting it usually in the winter. You know, it depends on how you like it. If you like the way it looks with the standing stuff and the structure, you know, during the winter, it looks nice. It's food for birds. You know, you leave it, we usually say cut it around February, but if you cut it anywhere from October to, to February, you're doing good. And, you know, additional steps on this. You have several things like this butterfly garden. I think there's a great opportunity for that, moving that out, planting it early, that could go ahead and go in this kind of spring. And so you could have next summer where you have something where you're kind of talking with folks about it and letting people see what it's going to look like. And then the other partnership thing, I have been talking to Ashville Green Works. Y'all have a bunch of trees on this plan and that can get costly. But Ashville Green Works has a great tree program and I, basically what I'm just wanting to do is kind of bring y'all together. I've already talked to Green Works about it. I've mentioned it and Nicole. And, and just let those discussions kind of come out because they, they, they could have their volunteer crews and stuff come out and do a lot of the planting and maybe even provide the trees. For either very tree cheap or, or free, you know, however that all gets worked out. But so there's an opportunity to bring in some other partners on this that I think can make this project. You know, as successful as you really want it to be. And personally. I appreciate the opportunity to be involved in this. I appreciate Nicole and her coordination. Because as I said, I really do think you have an opportunity here for a showcase project. I mean, there's nowhere else within the central county area. Where I put in anything like this to this size. I've done some down in the Piedmont around fifteen, twenty acres. And they're, they're, they really are amazing. It's, it's, it's been quite impressive at how the public takes to those things. But like I said, you know, they start to see the flowers and things and it just adds value to the landscape. So anyway, I appreciate this opportunity and then I think there's one more slide. There's just a few projects on there that you could get some ideas of kind of what these things are going to look like as it starts to come in. That's a first year picture that you're looking at there. That, that's what I mean by the all the yellow. And that one too. So anyway, I just wanted to take any questions that you might have and as you look through this. Packet or something comes up, you know, feel free to email me, call me, whatever I can do to help. I, I just really want to help make this project as good as y'all want it to be.
When we say we're going to have to flag it off. After they spray and determine how long would it need to be before it could open walking trail.
You know, right now the walking trail just goes around it.
It goes around the board.
Yeah, it goes around the board. You won't have to close that off. I'm just on adjusting grass area where you're going to be applying herbicides. I just wouldn't let everybody and their dogs and everything. Kind of run around like I said, I don't want that to do very much anyway. But I would just put flag in on the interior side of that path. And keep folks out of that. And even, even with that though, you know, a couple of weeks, if you wanted to take it down.
So as you said, we'd be applying herbicide to it some of the time, midsummer. Being a previous farmer. And losing a couple of the natives to a neighbor that applied two forty on these.
Especially two forty.
Yeah, and that's the only one we got. Humanity and the wind to be right. If we follow this, we're going to play close attention to that as well.
Well, and, and, and just to, I, I definitely speak to your concerns here. I definitely understand them. I mean, I, you know, I am with Fish and Wildlife Service. I, I get a lot of grief just from my client herbicide period and being on that, on that ballgame, you know. So that will be one of the utmost concerns that we have. We will make sure that, that, that is not done in a way that. There will be drill, we'll use a boom spray on a tractor. We, and I will say though, we will not use two forty. Especially because of the adulation and, and ability of that stuff to care. But we'll make sure and, and that whoever we get, well, I said, we, whoever we're contracting with. Is just kind of helping out with this and I'm going to be on site anytime any of this works going on. I'll make sure that that's taken care of.
Any other questions?
I had one, Mr. Tom. For example, the system that's, this weather system that's moving through now, you know, snack the flood line. If river gets up, which it does on occasion, it washes in. Sand and some trees and stumps and everything else and it's littered with debris through there. What maintenance would you recommend after a event like that? Would you take anything out? Would you take some of it out? Would you just, you know, that, that delay or what do you do after a big storm then like?
So that's a good question. And, and so, you know, the water, I'm definitely not. So let's start with that. Let's start with the flooding event, but water, I'm not concerned with. That's all out there. I mean, I'm. I, I, I've been working out of the Asheville office for almost twenty-five years now. So I, I've seen this place flood and I've seen how long it can hold water. And it, and it can be a few days sometimes, you know. But most of these plants can handle water. So the sedimentation. That shouldn't be an issue either. You know, they're laying, it'll lay some sediment out there and I've seen it pretty big. But for the most part, even if you get some really thick areas and you get some kill off, there's going to be enough other growth that should seed back in. It shouldn't be a problem. Most of these plants can handle. Some of that impact. So, but as far as the debris and stuff, so that really comes down, you know. Let's go back to kind of pre-European colonization when, when we had grasslands all over the place. We had a huge, large, really huge. Herds of large herbivores and animals roaming landscape, trampling these things, eating them down constantly on the move. The reason I point that out is because for you to go in there and take some, take some equipment in there, maybe get out logs or stumps or things like that, it could wash in there if you wanted them out of there. You're not going to hurt those plants. I mean, it could be a temporary laid down or pressed down. And might not look as good during that season if you're in, depending on what time of the year you're in there. But you're not going to hurt the plants to get in there and do it. You know, from a. From pollinator conservation standpoint, I mean, to me sometimes, and, and again, we might be, we might have some different ideas of kind of debris in there, you know, a log or something here and there. To me, that structure, that's habitat, that's providing some, some. Habitat to many different species actually. So. I, I don't know that I, you know, necessarily say, hey, you got to get every piece of debris out of there. It would, it would actually add to the system that you were creating out there. But, you know, if you're just talking about stumps and like I said, litter, just really bad looking debris. It wouldn't be a problem. Get in there and clean it out. I mean, that would just be all, all much all.
The native seed mix that you'd recommend or is this a commercial, commercially available mix? Or are you making your own and buying the different species and then put them into one?
It is, it is. So typically I, I, I work with a couple of different companies. And so these are commercial seed mixes, but they are native species, species that are typically native to this, this area. And, and one of the things I wanted to, I meant to mention a little earlier that, that I've been in some communication with one of the seed companies. And we're, they, we're even talking about trying to develop a custom seed mix for this site. Because I know some of the concerns is you don't, after talking to Nicole, you don't want stuff that's going to grow real high. You don't want a field full of, of big blue stem that's going to be eight feet tall. And, you know, you can't see the back sides and things like that.
Safety reasons nor with the ground around it. We just feel like that it needs to be, not have secluded areas.
Right.
People have to motivate them.
And I think that's what, and, and so that was one of the reasons why we thought it was important. Maybe we're going to even try to develop a, a, put together a custom mix just for this site. That would still use native species, but we'll keep those heights in mind so that. The safety thing, the safety concerns are, are eliminated. And one of the other things with that too is we're, we're cutting down on the grass mix. Sometimes a lot of some of these commercial mixes would be about sixty percent native grass. And so we're looking at cutting that down to around twenty to thirty. Because like I said, one of the biggest reasons y'all are doing it, I think is for some aesthetic reasons. It's, you want it to be pretty. And so we're going to work on that. And one of the things we've also kind of thrown together is. Doing a, a, a couple of strip border and when I say a strip, as far as a, a seed drill, a couple of passes with a seed drill. Of doing nothing but wildflower mix. So basically the outer edge, when you're walking around this thing on path, it's going to be nothing but flowers in there. And we'll put some grass species on the inside because those grasses are important. They do provide important habitat. And actually. Just from an outreach standpoint, people start to see, I'm not, I haven't met a person yet that sees native grass and talks about how ugly they are. I mean, most people just don't even know what they look like. They got, you know, it's amazing. Blue stem, all the coloration and stuff. They're really pretty. But, so we're, we're working on that seed mix for this, but it will be. Bought from a company and it's typically around about twenty, twenty pounds per acre. Is, is what was prescribed. We'll get a good kill, a really good kill on this and we can, we can get super clean. I can cut that back and it does save a few dollars. So. That, that's kind of what the seed mix of, there's a few companies, there, there's even some in-state companies that have worked with. Some Ernst Conservation, Ernst Seed. Is, that's one that I've been talking with about. And they just, it's just a matter of here, back and then and, and. Seeing what they say on their custom mix, they were kind of excited about the project and giving some of the kind of nuances to it. They were excited to try to put them together and say, hey, let's. See if we can meet those objectives.
Can you get your questions? It's going to be on.
And you see some of those pictures in there and, you know, it, it looks thick. So that is one thing I do want to, I do want to make sure, you know, I mean. We can deal with the height. We can do put species that are going to stay, you know, what we're looking at right now is really like four feet. That's kind of some of the highest that we're looking at. Most of them are going to be around the two grouping. Height of it. So, but it will be thick. Now, I mean, you saw some of those pictures. It, it, you know, the whole idea of it. Is to outgrow any of the non-native stuff, any of the, any of the weedy stuff or, or invases. To try to keep them at bay. So you need to grow it thick and then the other reason of it too. What I've found is that when these things look like that, people stay out of it. And so, because you, you know, you have people trailing one out there getting their Instagram picture and everything like that. You can get some of that. But for the most part, these things grow so big and, and they look up and. People really don't want to go traipsing about through, but you are going to have those trail systems so that you can kind of immerse yourself into it. So.
My question is about mains. Still getting disturbed. Some grounds very round up. Most of the time we go here, right, Lee and, and hope. Coming first thing. So how do you keep all that?
So that, and that's a really good question. So. Number one, that's one of the reasons that we spray multiple times over the season. So you have a seed bank that's built up into that soil, right? And, and it goes down all kinds of depths. Every time you turn soil over, that's one of the best ways to get ragweed and everything to, to blow up. Because you're bringing that seed from, from depths, even though you sprayed it. So number one, we spray it several times. Just so that we try to eliminate that seed bank to a, to at least a, an inch or so depth. The reason we use the seed drill, most of these seeds are really tiny. That seed drill's been barely scratched the surface when it plants these seeds. And a lot of them are smaller imprecises. I mean, they're, they're tiny. And so we're not going to disturb that soil to a depth. To enter, to, to cut, let that, that seed bank loose again. That's why we always say it again. I think it's in that bag that we never till. If you spray a couple of times, two or three times, you think you got it and you did a great job and you go out and you till it, think you're getting it ready. You just started it from scratch. So that, so some of the maintenance as far as releasing those, that's kind of how that's done and, and the way we keep that down. So that said. I'm not going to pretend that, you know, you're never going to get a, a slipper ragweed growing in there and things like that. So the maintenance as it moves forward, typically in most years, you're going to come in and, and cut it in, in the wintertime. And, and it'll kind of maintain itself. It'll grow thick and it'll keep a lot of things at bay. There could be points moving forward. After a few years, a handful of years where there might be some spot spreading or something that would be necessary, but you're never going to want to go, I mean, it'll. You know, you're never going to want to go out there or, or really, if this is a success and it's done properly. You should never have to go out there and, and just broadcast and kill off the whole thing again. There will be some spots around, there'll be some looies that are going to pop up here and there and you go out and any of those stands are already got and get a staff that can do that. It, it wouldn't need a lot of time. It'll. Even with that over a season, it'll be way, way, way less than them out there cutting every, I don't know.
Fertilizers. These, do they need initial fertilization or any fertilization?
Yeah. So as I, as I, as I really quickly went through, these plants are all pioneer plants. If you go back again, kind of the, to, to win what these plants adapted to, they're fire adapted. And so, and, and disturbance adapted plants. They were some of your first plants. Whenever you had a big wind grow or you had a big fire go through an area, a big fill off. These were the first things that kind of started to come back. So with that, because they're used to those and they've evolved into that kind of niche. They grow in some of the craftiest soil. They grow in some of the craziest soil that we've ever seen. And I put that stuff on here hardening and over a couple of years, it's been amazing how much new stuff are along in, in just terrible soil. We don't fertilize. We, we usually, uh, and and the reason for that is more times than not, when we fertilize, all we do is increase weed growth. And things that we don't want because these native plants, they're, they're kind of, they've grown to the nutrient requirement or the, they have nutrient requirements that are similar to what's on the site.
And so on. I have some yips. That's a great question. I really appreciate it. The native seed mixes, they were what, twenty-five, fifty dollars a pound or in that range, right?
I'm sorry.
The native seed mixes, they run down like twenty-five, fifty dollars a pound. Is that a kind of ballpark?
That's exactly right. And and it depends on, you know. Uh, what you're putting in and what, uh, we've even been looking at some, uh, some mixes that uh have some, you know, we'll say this and so I'll take it down. Uh, from my folks, but um, we've been looking at some that have some non-native annuals just to give a nice color on that first couple of seasons. And I've actually used these on some sites. And typically what happens is those non-native annuals, they will, they will get overgrown after a couple of years by the native uh plants. Um. I'm not totally sold on that yet. That's still kind of out. But some of those seed mixes will get down into like fifteen dollar range. Um, when you, when you add those in, but we are talking about maybe doing some mixing natural there. But for the most part, you're using uh strictly native seed mix, which is. More times than not, when I recommend just going and going with. Um, it's going to be around, they, they run about thirty, forty dollars a pound. There is a native wildflower mix with no grass in it. Um, that is around a hundred and twenty bucks now. Um. We talked about going, going that route or just strip. Um, if we want to keep it all native or we might use some of the cheaper uh non-native annuals and mean that to to kind of. Hit that objective of having just some color in that first year. Cause like I said, everybody, that's a big thing. Everybody wants to see some uh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks y'all. I appreciate it.
I don't even give them. Catch. This one somewhere. My name's Sean Jones with WGLA. So the whole and sad part is just to look at the, the green portion of the bottom of the brown smell. Where you have our places, this is the green area. We're going to be more active area where it's going to be closer to the soccer field area out there then. Near it. Better red. I don't care. So. Um, we, we did a sketch here and we had a cost estimate to try to figure out how much this might, this might have cost. This is a pretty similar shape to what's on the master plan. Just changing, we'll be trying to bring the area in some and keep the cost because it's manageable, possible. We don't put a butterfly. It's hard right here. It sounds like a community that everybody, so that's. That works out. Related to the. Cost estimate, we. Use similar projects and big collaborations from other projects, et cetera. I'm figuring things we have to do, come up with budgets, it's a hundred forty-five thousand dollars for. That would work. Fish work, living fire, and our central front end from the state, we do grade in more than an acre or. That's an inconsistent full demo, but projects out here. Like the state board park, which is the main part itself. We've got erosion control permits. We got one for the big parking lot, basketball court is. We've got one for the ball field. Maybe that's actually maybe the river trade. So we better get. Erosion joint permits over the years for the larger projects out in your, going to be consistent there. What kind of questions you have? It's basically the goal though is to get normal usable, to get it, to fill the passions, to give. A flatter or just basically a level surface. I, I don't think we're going to get to a level of like fields out here necessarily. It'll be. Usable for act, more active use than just. Uh, basically automated chasing types drip, you know, the grass out here is, you can hardly get that level without lifting aside. This is probably not this. I think the supersize, so I see that like twice maybe early on. Um, I don't think it'll be at that level for a while. They. You want, you're trying to get against any grass out of this with this conditional work. So. When it involves grading, erosion control. We'll take a bridge to manage to, uh, block off the area kind of like. Talking about, but people more physical block this off and be connected with construction site. Um, we've had either soap nets or like an orange construction, so. In terms of um, timing, I would recommend, if you want to do this project. Maybe getting things set up where we, we sign now, start trying to get permitting in winter, maybe. We're trying to get that, there always be maybe the. Planting and spraying from the field, which we have to start that now, we, well, I don't know that I have, it takes a while, but. States and funding process is pretty involved now. Lots of pages of checklists and. Got nation to make the parade, but rather should be separate project, but. Part of the process. Other thing I do, I had to talk about this tonight, it was the bronze project. I can see a situation while working on this project and then say since. The uh, uh, areas are violent sprayed, so it's not here as well. That's not part of this grading operation. I could see some possible confusion there to state, but then. And I see some vegetation on there, so they're actually breeding the best themselves. So that's, you know.
So is the. Are you proposing in any of this grading work? The future of the matter trail?
The. We put a little bit of bill in there.
Yeah.
Up of that, but not, not, not from the tree being beyond, just making sure that that.
Would you make any attempt to try to crown that four acres or you're just going to?
Yes.
What would you recommend for grading on it?
The, the grain will be. Try to get the drains, that's the greatest extent possible. Uh, I don't know how. It's literally start one design. I don't know how possible we did the same thing you guys built up. We're able to pretty much shoot that. Um. We'll see, but it's trying to move the dirt that's there around, bringing much of it, it's funny, you know. Um, but we try to get to the drain, that's what we can. Maybe two percent to still flat. Um, depending on the grass, so soak up water. Um, the soil out here don't suck up the char and it's hard to go down different plays in the air, but we will try to. Keep our chairs the same way, but we can keep that in our chairs.
Do you have, I know it might be too early to know, do we have any issues with pedestrian traffic from parking lot down into this area? Does it take, is it going off the next slot terrorist down to there? Right, then cross over the. The trail, the shoes on the trail?
Yeah.
Good question. Right. So just so unclear, um. The green areas, um, we were talking about. Making that into the. Talking about news, somebody wanted to like all, and the other we're talking about the management, we're talking about two different things. This one back here.
Really unrelated than. The, the time direction, timing potentially and also just help books because it's going, it could look like it's all one project potentially to know how, but. I mean, she play out. Basically, I, I believe that can be done, well, the identity between each other, do one up the other. They, they are.
I think Tom is here in life. For us to, if we want to move on this. He needs to get started as soon as possible. The findings on where, you know, Aprilish.
And I'll just add counsel that this particular project was not included in the capital group of plans and stand alone project. When we started looking at this following discussions, I think in August about trying to make better use of that backfield. So we budgeted uh fifty-five thousand dollars for the metal. Um, and it's not estimated that it costs him any that much at this point. So the council is interested in funding this. We would need to do some checking with the budget. To fund it. Uh, and we could use a portion of those funds that we would argue is sort of matter. But it's up to, it's up to the board at this point, if you want to make it priority now, if you want to make it a year. Uh, my speed couldn't go, but I can, I can say that. Staffs, for fact, there's a lot of stuff going on right now. Uh, I don't think through the time, if it was, we're just a little bit. That is a fair assessment, if you want to jump on it.
I would say yes and no. I think some of my bigger concerns, I think. To maintaining that. So maintaining, maintaining the meadow is something we can do immediately with the equipment and sound and matter. So moving it over to um. Having this open space and we do establish that. In the spring, I think one of my biggest concerns was looking at how are we going to maintain that space? Um, I have our, I didn't include it in our package, but I'm happy to, to talk about it. The, um, the equipment, we would need to do that. Yeah, some prices have been re-contract out at that moment. Um, so the big things for me is if we do buy the equipment and, and so we looked at a couple of. All flex motors, you got the newers that would have largest tractor. And we got two boats for that, approximately twenty-one thousand hours for that implement to be able to allow us to mow that field in a, have efficient manner. Um, so, but it's not just the cost of the equipment. It's also where I put it. So then I don't currently have space and maintenance building is existing. And I do have a estimate to add on the most we could do ahead of time. We have a game of twenty-four by twenty-four, it's like socially garage extension. Which doesn't give us a whole lot of space, but obviously has this equipment. But that is also another large expense. Um, it's something that couldn't happen instantly, I think. Um, and then if we were to do this, we certainly have the option of contracting out. So I reached out to a, a monkey maintenance who. Previously had some of our moving contracts out here and he thought, without actually looking at it, he thought around four hundred, five hundred dollars a month. For them in the tax base. So that's, those are all the other things to consider other than just. Moving forward on this, there's a lot of other money that should be considered.
Oh, how would you like to see this story or try and so, but how would you like to see it from anything? You like to say nineteen? Um. Pass a month. Um, and a couple weeks more.
If the expectation is that people in prime grass growing season. I think it would have to be moved weekly. So once a week, we would have to move. That field with the expectation that it's. Going to be reasonable for people to run in light, otherwise like. It'll be almost a bit high. Um, you know, midsummer when it gets real hot. May not be needed. Um, but in prime moving season, I would think once, once a week. Be necessary.
How much is the? Green highlight area actually was in the, of the.
Oh, all of it, every, every major flood event. And so that is something else to consider and we have to do just like. You know, he, he can grade it flat once, but we, that area typically doesn't get a lot of sand and cell debris. It tends to be closer to the other end of the river. Um, so that is part of the reason in the master plan that this section. Was to be the, the maintained open space. Um, but just like we did every time we have other sand deposits, we go in their tractor, we scoop them and. Try to drag out where we can and right then, but we do know that the landscape can possibly change with the big flood and you get to take sand deposits and. Things like that.
Or is counsel on this project if we call it? Went forward with it as far as the. Future meta trail, but future meta trail, the uh, eight trails from there, consistent with our ones or four?
That's not the intent. Um, the intent would be to be more natural, so grass. Um, when we did the riverbank restoration project. We actually used a lot of the spoils from that project to elevate. The other section. So if you, well, I don't know if it's on that map, but I mean, yes. So that another trail existed, we started using that this year. So we were able with the riverbank project to pull in that additional soil. Raised it just a little bit where water doesn't pool and essentially we just mow a path through there every week. So as they're doing there weekly, they just have that patch of browse. And so that would be the intention here is to, to keep it natural.
Okay. So basically where there's going to move all of that, that future trail, it's in the cave image, ice cream business, I'm more of a standard dress.
Grass, okay.
We got you.
Might, I'd like to ask WGLA to move forward with designing, put some collection of zones and then. And the next step, I, I also would. Like to see some literary recommendations on how to. How to tackle this financially, or at least dedicate the funds. And authorize the engineer to start actually giving them full on pains.
Cause we do have a desire and need for that to be usable for that.
Absolutely. And, and as I said, as long as we're okay, especially to start with, if we're in payment contracting on the maintenance, so come this summer. You know, I, I don't think we'll have, in addition to the maintenance building and actually even any implementations are shown behind. We were told it would be at earliest October next year before we could get any implementation for our tractor. Um, if we were to do it now. Um, to start that maintenance for cycles. Um, so as long as we're okay with contracting out and making sure that I am. Imagine going forward that there's contractor money to help maintain it. Um. I don't see a problem with.
We've got a whole points too, as far as. We're going to have to be passing, but I mean, we've got our detail design, make sure that the page is changed. We kind of know what we do there. I don't think we did shapes there, but. Once you eat your price again, that's. Part of our, you know, you just have your process. So that's one of the, which. If you still want to do it with that. I think this is a realistic estimate, but. We can deny someone a form of saying, Mary, I mean, since I was breaking up out. She didn't, not even the entire amount of this year and just. And that dude was a, you know. Farm turning into their system, maybe that was human reasons.
Yeah, I'm repeating myself, but it's the cheapest or most economical recreation space this town can. Develop right now. And I've got this great property down the road and while I'm eager to get underway with it as well, it's kind of like I hate the. Abandon this and put our focus down the road. It's. Statistically speaking, this is the cheapest land that we can obtain right now and turn into recreation space. But I'm. Advocate for this, both the meadow and the open unstructured recreational.
So if you don't mind, if you want to motion to. Kind of the. Organizational reform environment.
Well, the town has WGLA engineers in the fore of a design on the uh meadow grading and seeding for the park.
Okay, second.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion on it before we move on? All of that?
Uh.
Thank you. And what we'll be in is. Be in positions early in the spring to try and placing grass, but that's probably some of the people are already in November, but it's time. We'll do that as short as the earliest possibility, but maybe the next. Follow like then on the, how it works out with. Girls, we don't maintain.
Even the ability to get contractors to be able to do it is actually.
Right. Yes. It's not only realistic currently, but then we'll see if we can work towards as the earliest. Sure possible, but maybe this fall is a, maybe it was today, next year.
The, the Paul, while Paul is here, if you talk to him about the war situation, they may have made any design. Of that.
Yeah, we've discussed it. He's given me every map that he has that he thinks he knows are big.
Well, we, we first some maps, there's. There's some accurate information, some guesswork involved, but it's perfect for well, the guy's going to.
And for those of you that are, you know, weeds, I'm thinking about the, so we really searching. For thousands of. On a plane to figure out where then, where all the leak is coming from.
Bill's out here today.
Thank you so much. Feel free to leave and get on the resolve.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Um, moving on to say.
Long by two thousand. So. I'll get you dead.
Uh, moving on to say American H Q plan.
Uh, so again, counsel, this is a continuation of the conversation we've been having the last couple of months about the very interesting type of funding priorities. Uh, we talked about this a little bit and and. Uh, in your, in your normal regular general meetings. I think we're to the point now where we can have a workshop about it. I think we can sit down and really learn as you figure out how, how do you want to invest this money? Um, as of the end of the report, they were a hundred and fifty or survey responses yesterday, they were up to a hundred and fifty-three. So we have a good number of good representation of the community. We've gotten some follow-up emails from people. Um, requesting. So we have a good number, a good representation of the community, we've gotten some follow-up emails from people requesting that we fund. Community centers and supportive development budget, things like that, so I think we have a strong base of information. But I just don't think that your traditional format is giving you the most productive way to have that conversation, so. I'm recommending that we have a workshop on November twenty-eighth, or just Monday, three thirty P M. But it would take more than an hour or so. Opportunity for all of us to sit down, learn formally, and put some, put some money on the wall and figure out how we want to buy it as it's done then. So that's the recommendation at this point, I haven't been able to share regarding. Priorities or anything else for that matter, you heard from Paul tonight about the flash board. Just tracking the media journal, what do you want, so we'll all give a day, which is matter of how, how this board wants to invest in these funds.
We'll see, if you may, if you'd like to see what he's got on the thing, maybe, so.
That's not, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, it's Monday, thanks.
Now.
Let me do the chances for, I'm sort of on vacation, why? I don't think that's all. Yeah.
So everybody, like the motions, who just get scheduled workshop for four, four o'clock, please. So, thank you, second.
I'll say.
All of that. No, we're. All of them.
Yep.
Okay. Finding more bank receipts.
As you may recall, there's been a resignation of the board, Pete Williams resigned. In October, and the position was advertised on town's website and Facebook page. We currently have six active applications on file, we reached out to everyone who submitted application. Except for Mr. Kenzie, Glenn Kenzie, whose application just received October. And several of the folks were still interested, because we're not able to get a hold of a couple of them then. And I believe you met Mr. Cole this evening, who is obviously very interested. One gentleman is. Uh, excuse me, unable to reach Mr. Grass. And we've provided you a path to, excuse me, a spreadsheet, that is one. I did find you. You've got a handful of folks who won't serve. Voice pleasures to be replaced in that position now.
We will have a pleasure of the nomination for the C and the integrators, we have a call.
I would like to nominate my vote to the position.
You mean you have a second for neutral vote? Well. First, and we got James with second, Randy made the motion for Mr. Paul. James second, any discussion about? The plan board position.
So Mr. Kim's is down here because he's just a recent athlete.
He's on, he's on.
He's on.
Oh. He just hasn't been reached back out to because he was such a recent athlete. We got a first, second, any proposal discussion? All of that.
Uh.
Okay, all of that.
Um.
William, Drake. Or which call, or take that position, confirm ending four twelve or twenty-four. And that's the only one we have, so we're planning on just, that's everything. We will move on to the board adjustment, uh, E or B regents.
Council, again, you may remember that we had a vacancy on the board of adjustments, so a member of the planning board was moved up to forefront position on there. So we currently have an application, which has been governing for a second alternate position. We do have one application on file, Mr. Bennett's grass. We reached out then, we're not able to confirm whether or not you're still interested. Currently, your, your only application is available.
Can we take that this time and reach out for more applications?
Sure. Work continues to do.
Any follow-up discussion on this?
I'd be supportive of table any discuss, but we haven't been able to contact them regarding you the long days.
We, we're going to ask first council, how fun reaching out to the community, this has been advertised thirteen weeks already, but not even a minute.
No. The council will take note of that and try to, you know, look for issues in the business, we won't be fine. He's very interested.
And there's nobody on the planning board. Who wants to ultimately alternate?
We're going to have, we'll do that. And Jim Postre. And just more. We're how. It's like.
We did ask the planning board, we're willing to share on the board of adjustment.
So as far as legal, it has been noted, there's no action taken, and that's.
You know, the second ultimate, the expectations that tend to all meetings correct, even though they're second ultimate. And if there's not a compelling reason for them, can be. What is the board adjustments, I mean, what is their meeting schedule, is it every quarter, every month?
Every other, even on Saturday.
Every, even months?
Every, yes, that's right.
Or as needed, or as called, I guess the chairman.
And there was question? Uh, moving on to F, Land Sky Regional Council Board Delegates Representative.
Mr. Mayor Council, as you probably recall, when we first were elected, there were a number of committee assignments. Well, both on, you assign yourself various boards, Mr. Young and myself, several others that were delegates. Uh, I think he's added some, some scheduling challenges, so I'll have a chat and then review if we. Get a look back down on that.
Yes, I'm happy to serve and represent the town on the Land Sky Regional Council as a delegate. However, once we got through spring, summer hit, I missed like the last three, not four meetings. You can attend remotely, which is a blessing, but it just seems like the jobs I've been on, I barely have, so sales signal, I've made calls, less screen. Audio and video, so I just wanted this council to know that it's not me represented regularly, I'm not asking to be taken off of it, but I'm gonna. Maybe the twelve thirty on Wednesdays, once a month, and that's just the absolute worst times, twelve thirty, and it's not even four or five o'clock in the day. Square in the middle of your workday, so that's why it's been such a challenge for me, I anticipate. Being able to attend as winter sets in again, but, you know, I just want to make you aware of that, and I'm happy to, to you to try, but I didn't want to miss the. Think that I was making all those meetings.
Um. And that is a voting board, correct? Uh, no, okay, that would be okay.
Just a promotional, okay, that's, that's fine. Definitely good on it.
Well, any discussion on this, or?
So. Daniel's still going in, in this grand.
Yeah, I, I've been going, the, the, the purpose of the board of delegates. Is the broad form for elected officials from all various communities, the counties and cities in line of that region. And staff, the number of staff that are some of the various agencies are all for that stuff. So I have been attending, and when there's something available, likely we update. It is very.
Let's see, we all work, and, you know, I appreciate it, if we're being honest with that, you know? And I don't have any problems. If you're team, then I'll be with, with country.
I'm pretty surprised.
It's just sort of FYI, I just need to look at.
Oh, I'm six five. Started out on campus, the office on that one. It was, I had to take off work at eleven to get there about fourteen or fifteen, and. And I just.
You know, traffic is just a good hour of that.
Yeah.
But then, well, I'm. Not even done at home, like, and so, so again. I'm sure I didn't see an upcoming event there that needs to be defended by a fair support, I'm sure that one was so. If you think left, okay. Staff has come up, we'll move on to J, one or two, we might be being led by a train, you know, this one, so.
It's, um, so we have. Now, Daniel, Greg, I'm on, I'm just gonna throw it out there, we have bring up with city has to go. And all that, so. We have agreements that we don't extend the sewer line, so.
We're just not able to confirm if they ever, I don't believe it would be, but town over there has a agreement with the city in Nashville. We now understand a lot of that is in the town, that is approved. That approval for the towns comes with approval of like the subdivision. It's not a council level decision, so just like out here on Jeffrey's Road, the project. Met all of the. All of the guidelines and getting our organs. But. I'm just going to know it today, so if we've got the project up to date, that wants to extend. Water, and have to do a sewer line on its days, up to the two miles. It may check off all the boxes that are in our organs to be approved. But. I think the extension of water can special surry lines on our town, or. Needs to, that decision needs to come, because that. Project up to today, I mean. If they extended it to the, that puts the pressure on all of the property that goes, there's large surry lines go by, and that's, that might not be something that we're. Interested in seeing developed, definitely, so for that, I have answered, so. Does that, does that kind of? Lay it out, halfway through it. So. I would like to see us talk about making many extensions of water and sewer lines in town, and a council decision. Instead of just a decision, if they check off all the boxes, that'd be. Uh, that ordinance, so the planning order at this point. If they need all the requirements, then they have to send it off, yeah. For it. Have to approve. And council is no say whether we extend run large or large all of, all of that.
And we, so we have that agreement with. Engine of water. So the way that, way that it's structured, granted, I'm both certain that Hendersonville, our sewer advisory committee. And up until about eighteen months ago, this, this policy did exist, that was brought up by. By the, you know, as I recall at the moment. Fact that Hendersonville, they have a very strong network of water and sewer. Mostly in most of its water system. Fear of that, just to Randy's point, that water is extended to all the squares, even though it's one that we have twice. So what the city did was modify this policy input from this town and others. Do, they added a paragraph saying that the developer, they're great, I mean, that. Is responsible for jurisdictional approval, for the city would approve with the extension. In other words, if, if I want to build. Subdivision of that on two eighty. The city Hendersonville, three years ago, wanted this approval based on their own design standards and requirements and such. Now, if they do not get local zoning approval, the city will not extend that, that super, she's not what we want. So there's a little bit of a checking balance there, but to Randy's point. Uh, most of the developments that we see, please look at two lady, for example, will be thought by, right? Once my previous permit and check all the boxes. For, probably get an issue that permit, so it really is under control there. So I think, I think it is a way for us to legally. Get this with the city, and I think it's worth us exploring, and coming up to agree with it. That's otherwise, the only other. Option that I really do, is looking for zoning districts, draft it down, and very, very low. High restrictions, low, low densities on them, so even if the wire is extended. There's really no value to that property, and it's next, we wouldn't be able to. Do this for both the family and board, some wishes at times. So I, that is big with your attorney about this, this week, and. All of another legal gray area, and she already thought about it, but I'm going to keep down. Figure out how this works.
Yeah, I see it, I see it personally as being a big, big property, property rights. Challenge. Because it almost likes for cutting this. Some of the ordinances off before they even get a chance to put an application forward. I don't know, it's a battle, you know, to see it as a challenge, where. If, you know, if things have we control, where water, so it was going. Why are they coming, ask for something, and they think they can't get it just because it fits, just to be able to hear it so on too, but especially usually where. Um. Yeah, but definitely had to be looked at by the time, and decided if it's going to be. Another legal challenge or not.
I admit that that's some sort of a development agreement.
And saying that, what's to keep, uh, Ashmore Water Authority from. Knowing why this Hendersonville City controlled. I know they don't, but we've got Ashmore water here, so what's to keep them coming? Need another in a local room for them, I guess.
They found who.
That's where we went. I just think the town, she went to the boys. And another municipality extends water or sewer lines, and it's there, there's, there's.
You know, I, I see what you.
It's because whenever you run it up past. If you, if you run past, they can land it.
You're just going to say the change as far that goes.
Exactly, yeah. And that's where all the development always comes with worries.
But I could say more channel would go from that property or just over there, saying, hey. Here, you cut me a whole course. The front thousand, I think, I know, I just don't know what happened, I don't know what even happened.
Like the, I like that they'll talk about. President. You know, it's fine, you know.
I would like to agree with Sam, we'll definitely save them up, it's just.
We don't, yeah. Let's take a next step, take a next step. Anything else here for our agenda before we move forward? And we go with our, I'm asked directly, unless she gets called up.
I'm just want to let you know that. At your next meeting, in addition to hopefully an applicant for the board adjustment. We will be bringing you the applications for the Parks and Recreation Board, sorry, Parks, Trails and Recreation Board. And then in January, we'll start getting into some reappointment possibilities. And we're going to try, first meeting in January, to bring them to consideration at the next meeting. First board.
Uh, before we move on, I told you, you feel, this, I hate to say it like this, but you feel like those would be refilled? Uh, the reinforcements? Or do we need to, while we're talking to these people, we probably about. More of adjustment, because we need to be talking about.
I don't know that we have any. We, we have parks.
Coming up in January, I don't know.
Are you talking about for the next application, or vacancies?
Yeah, or not vacancies precisely.
Reaffordments.
They don't, they don't want to be back in there, or anybody talking about.
I. I just want to speak to anybody, even if you talk after.
That's fine.
If one is, if it's considered seven.
Well, that's fine, like I said. Well, that's fine, so we need to, as council, we really need to talk, if they're laying in rest of more adjustment, to the petition for the park, right? Position.
And, and that is, that's part of our process, we don't reach out too soon. But in the next week or two, we would be asking Nicole to reach out to the board members. To see if they're still interested in being reported before it even comes to the review.
I'm sure, I'm just trying to avoid making these phone calls and probably thinking the government's still whatever. You know, that may not be an excellent one to judge, but we're not giving it as in another position, on a government, more. No, it's almost. That all you have soon?
We do have four applications, but that box opening, all right?
Okay. Okay. Oh. Uh, tax collection?
So at the end of October, we had collected a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a little bit better of a collection percentage than twenty twenty-one.
So at the end of October, uh, we had collected a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, which is a little bit better of a collection percentage than twenty twenty one. This week alone. We had, um, the mortgage company said their checks, we've done six hundred and sixteen thousand dollars this week. About three hundred and fifty thousand of that today.
Wow.
So we we had a good deposit today. Um, and so that's, um, as of today, it's about one point four five million year to day. And it's just under fifty percent. So we're. Chugging along, we should be all right.
Okay, thank you for your hard work. Thank you for this for our link. When you go to it.
And just real quickly, um, Santa Claus is coming, so everybody please, mark your calendars, December the tenth. And what we do at our annual Santa tour with the fire truck, we're on town, so we're really excited about that. Um, other than that, we are um, very. Quickly closing our picnic shelter project out. So we're hopeful, uh, we'll take control of that building in the next couple of weeks, um, where we're going to find a bunch of list items, that sort of thing. And the thing is, we're making those picnic tables. So that's. We're covered in.
And I will say that in the end, if I will step down every day and walk through with the builders and the super panic and. And a few discussions with some. Things we didn't see out of our own, but uh, well, that worked for it and make some minor adjustments. Um. I don't know if the code words mentioned it, but I will, uh. We, I think as a group envisioned the same ceiling. The toner ceiling that we had in the other one. And software. Now, we have uh, basically four by eight bean board. That'll be. And it's always brought that attention. And they rolled out a plan pretty much and said, you know, this was what was split, you know, half inch plywood. And this V board flat out, so it's a. Architectural. Uh, misunderstanding, I would say. Uh. I totally told, you know. The chance of it wearing the weather and humidity we have around here sometimes like that is probably not going to be good. But always remember, we could simply come back underneath it. And uh, put the toner directly on what we got there that needed. Which would be a condition of charge at some time, but it wouldn't be like losing the whole rooms, don't know. And. Yes, it was just a. You know, we tell them all the wrong, and then they decide we get nobody value. But it's with the bottom of the ground. So with that being said, the rest don't look really good. The the height, you know, everything they've caught, everything that fascinate. Everything are you good? Okay, written on the land and he can actually.
Just a couple of short announcements. I received the revised plans for the Jefferson Town Home Development, so I'll start relooking at those this week and hope to get that due next week. Um, having gone through the law, yeah, there's a lot of materials they sent. Um, we received plans for a new commercial site on uh, Fanning Fields Road, the extension across Walesville Highway from Murphy and Gilda. A field that ends near Amazon. Um, so that's a new project. It's about a thirty five thousand square foot commercial building, uh, fifteen thousand square foot accessory building. Um, and then notably, we also got the zoning permitted plans for phase one of the legacy project. So. It's here. Well, so a lot of activity, um, we're also conducting interviews for the planning technician, social department. So it's all good.
Any other questions for? Mountain?
I'm the. Code enforcement officer.
It's the. The planning technician position, and that's what we're interviewing for currently.
That's what we.
Yeah, that's a part of the job.
Then.
I would like to um, just mention the fact that I'm very proud of everyone. Our staff's working extremely diligently on taxes. Recreation permit, recreation software is being implemented, permit software being implemented. Uh, we are dealing one of the largest public property class I've ever seen. Uh, in my career, and I assume I've done that. Uh, so I just want to. Publicly acknowledge everyone for all the work that they've been doing, supported this community. It has done a lot. Um, everyone is very supportive of each other. They're supportive of me. So you should, should. Just one question, I mean, very dedicated, dedicated staff here. Um. And then the only one, we'll, one, one person mentioned is. The emraizle that is happening right now at the county level. Uh, shows a reminder what else you want to do, you know, designing the version. Since we are doing that sure. That's a good opportunity for everybody to come out. Part about ask questions. And we're doing directed frustrations to the calendar.
Okay, any counsel comments?
Well, I was curious about the approach and press. Record, my first. And who's jumped through or who did they do that first? It's an attorney for uh, Mr. Reese, who we've been working on a food truck session for the last couple of years. Uh, they've requested records um, from South Council. Due to some other officials regarding making sensor related food trucks, the enormous changes. Um, the most violation that we issue. All of the hearing notices, um, essentially. Anything and everything.
Sex. Food mills, anything for paying that. I have any news, maybe. I don't know, and give some relations, so they can get it in file. Is. It's far back to two thousand and eighteen.
That's, that's right.
Yeah. Anything else?
I I would like to add to what you've done for public record for one. Thank you to everyone for responding so promptly. That's made our license.
The understanding of public records request, uh. So within a reasonable amount of time. Month, the single. Year, month, the group. It's not like subpoena or something like that. They. Like, it's not too heavy a lift, thanks for getting what you need. I would say it's a very heavy lift. Those have been, maybe we've worked on it for. A month now. I'd say we're about seventy five percent there. We've got some. Like I, we got some, some small to do. By and large, all of the records that, I don't know, meeting this, again, in fact, it's all the source friends. We really, that's the work is different too.
You can imagine years ago, before, and just being able to use builders and all the return box and. What they call it, uh, when it's all. What they call it, autopilot and whatever, and you can go back and pull archives.
Oh, yeah.
And they see, having to dig through files, here we go, with that would have been more. All right, what will counsel call it? Any other questions, John? Who did it? That's the subject.
I'll say.
I'll fight or. Yeah.